And welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eight-thirty a.m. At this time, as we always do, we'll have Pastor Troy Masterson come up and do the prayer with Bible Baptist Church, and then we'll do our pledge. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we're thankful for this opportunity to gather and do the business of the city. I pray, Lord, that you would be with each city leader here. I pray that you would bless them in their homes, Lord. I pray that you'd give them great wisdom from you. I pray that this meeting would be done decently and in order. I pray that all these things would further the goals of the city and city leaders, and that we would see great growth and prosperity in this region. Thank you for this time, Lord. I pray that it would be used for your honor and glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Then we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
We have a presentation this morning from StanTech on the City of Bradenton vision update.
Yes, we have Matt Lewis and Diane Chadwick here from StanTech to make a presentation on the status of the visioning process.
And this is one of the things that today, being the business meeting, is going to be a little probably shorter than what if we decide to have a workshop where we can actually expand on questions and things of that nature in the future. But this was just to kind of give a little bit of an update.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matt Lewis. I'm the project manager for City of Bradenton's Visioning.
Better talk a little bit louder?
You better there?
Yep, thank you.
All right. And with me is Diane Chadwick, our principal in charge on this particular project. And I'm going to try to keep this short so that you can get to the business you have to do at your business meeting here today. So... This is a map of Bradenton as it is right now in terms of how old your structures are. What we want to look on this is the yellow on this product. The yellow is basically where your CRAs are, and it's also where your oldest buildings are. Everything in the yellow is over sixty years old. Now, just think about as we move into the future, as we evolve our comprehensive planning, as we evolve our way of looking at the city, a lot more of this is going to turn yellow. And so the question we're going to be looking at through this first part of the visioning process is what is our agreed-upon understanding of how we approach the built environment? As more properties get older, as more commercial property starts to be able to redevelop and revitalize, what direction do we take that property in? I believe I've talked to all of you about the process. We are in Phase One of this orientation, which is basically concluding with this city council meeting, at which point we will convene a steering committee and have the steering committee of business owners and nonprofits kind of help us take this out into the public for the outreach process. The outreach process will have several meetings with the community, and the important thing to remember about the outreach process is it's not necessarily those first meetings where we're going to get the best participation from the community. What we'll know from those first meetings is who's participated and who hasn't participated. And then we can bounce back and get full coverage by doing makeup meetings at the back end of it. That's going to be the fun part where we go to them. And then a lot of analysis is going to happen like you do with a survey of a community. And finally, we'll take it to you for final steps and some next steps in a playbook. We have a steering committee. The steering committee's responsibility is basically to make sure that whatever we come up with, whatever approach we take, is something that the city can deliver on. It's the truth this thing. The last thing you want to do is go through a visioning process and be in a position where we can't actually do that. You want to have a vision that you can achieve. Now, we've had a good number of business stakeholders identified by both council members as well as the steering committee. I believe we've got a good coverage of the development industry, development finance, as well as the business interests along various Main Street districts and merchants associations, the Village of the Arts, Artist Guild. And we've also got another Artist Guild member that's been recommended since we put together this PowerPoint. But I'd like for you, you don't have to, I'm not going to put you on the spot right here. You've got an idea of who we're putting in this. You've got this now. And these are people that are active in the community that will help us develop this vision. They'll help us understand where we're taking it and things like that. If there's anyone you see, think of that can come on this, feel free, reach out to me, reach out to the city staff, any member of the project team, you have our contact information, and just let us know. Nonprofit stakeholders, again, these are people that invest in, you know, the built environment in the community on a regular basis. We've got education foundations, community foundations, realize Bradenton, obviously, churches and historical societies. And this, we've also got recommendations for a couple more educational groups. One is recess education, which is more of a homeschooling group. No, recess education is more of an education equality group. And Exodus Resource Center, which is a homeschooling group. So we'll be reaching out to include them in the stakeholders group as well. Then finally, the survey questions. I'm not going to go through and belabor each of these survey questions. You're familiar with what they are. But they cover three things: how we use the city. That's how we understand how we move from place to place and what places people go to and where they don't go. Then likes and concerns. What are our hopes and dreams for the city? What are we thinking is going to be a big issue moving forward? And finally, population coverage. I mentioned earlier that at the back end of this, we'll go out to the community and cover those areas we didn't cover. These questions are going to be the ones that tell us when we miss somebody. There's a lot of these, but they're, you see them in every survey, and that's why they have them in there. Getting to the outreach, this is like a neighborhood map of the City of Bradenton. And this map is something we can cross-reference with demographic information. We see that we missed a whole bunch of people in the high-income earners bracket. We know generally where they're located, and we could do targeted outreach and note geographies. Same thing applies for other languages spoken. Same thing applies for different racial, ethnic demographics or household types. We can target into neighborhoods where we're missing respondents for our survey. We already have the list of active neighborhood associations. Here's a smattering of them that is used by the police department to do their regular neighborhood talks. And I want to touch a little bit on our focus groups. This is something that happens as part of the back end of the outreach phase that we're about to enter and really helps us understand the analysis phase that we'll enter after we finish outreach. And what this will do is if you have difficult issues that come up during the outreach phase that we have to make recommendations on, we put together experts from our firm as well as the city and the community, the stakeholders groups, to really tackle these things and make meaningful recommendations on them rather than us saying, "Think about this someday." And then finally, that analysis, all of it goes into a playbook that we'll bring to you at the end of this with the results of the survey, so you know what your citizens are thinking as well as recommendations for what you should be doing, what the order of magnitude of those things are, and whether or not one needs to come before another. And I hope I got that in under ten minutes for you.
Thank you. So like I said, I think it was important to get a little bit of an update and kind of go where we're at, what we're doing, but also thought it was important that, you know, when we can get a deep dive at a workshop in the near future, you know, coming out where we can really have some discussion about, you know, who and if there is some more people to put on the list and kind of that situation. So, all right. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
Citizen comment is next.
All right. Yes, agreed it now, as always. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting of any non-agenda item, agenda items, future agenda items, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearing at the appropriate time. So at this time, I will call up Wiley Green, the third, citizen comment. And please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wiley Green, two thousand and fifteen, Twenty-Fifth Avenue West, Bradenton, Florida. I wanted to get an update on a project we had brought before council before about some street development.
Can you speak up just a little bit for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In the twenty-five-hundred block of Twenty-Fifth Avenue West, we had several potholes, and I had been assured from the public work director in the last year budget that we would be seeing some new things going on in that area. And before he left, and I even came to the budget meeting, and he reassured me again. Now he's gone, and now I'm trying to get a status on where we're at. And I haven't been able to get any information. Some of the council people did respond, but as far as me getting a timeline in this particular area, it's been going on over probably three to ten years for this to get done, and nothing has been done as of yet. I talked to you about it, and you reassured me as well. So it's not like people don't know about it. It's just when we're going to get it done. And I thought, sure, this would be the year. And when I checked in December, I got a letter back before the director retired saying, "Well, now we got some other things going on." So it seems like it's getting pushed back again. Also, I wanted to talk about some equipment. The city are bringing the need for landscaping grounds, some stump grinders. I know we're outsourcing because of employee shortages, but hopefully we'll be able to get some stump grinders. Me and some of my neighbors had some trees cut down, and it's been over six months, and they're still not stump-grounded up yet or replanted the palm trees. So I was just wondering, had that came into the budget as well? And again, we appreciate the mayor and some of the council people when they do check into it, but I was just wondering if you can get a better job when you check with your department heads or whoever, and then they respond back to you, that maybe you can respond back to the citizens with the update on what actually is going to take place, or if anything. And again, it's not like you've been neglecting your, some of the councils. Just sometimes things get dropped, and we don't hear back from them and like some of the other people that came up before, and you've been aware of it. It's been a year, and you didn't know that, you know, nothing was done. So hoping that this won't happen again, and we'll get better communication. I know most of the council people are for the whole city, and rather they have different projects for their district, but still, we're just hoping some things can get done. And we don't have some of the things that have been in the past where twenty-year-old projects come up where they're trying to get one thing done for something else. And we thank you all for your time and your efforts.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. So I guess if we could just have Mr. Wiley and Mr. Jones get together out there and get the addresses, then we would definitely follow up on it. No need for comment, just you can talk with him. Go talk with him now. Yeah, but Dean, if you don't mind jumping out and talking with him now, just writing down the addresses and that, if you can get that. Yeah, yeah. All right. So we'll definitely write everything down, and we'll get it followed up on. Any other comments? All right. Moving forward, Madam Clerk?
The next item is the consent agenda, Items A through N. And if I can just reiterate that Item C, Six C, the resolution was changed, and it was forwarded to council yesterday.
Chair, will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I would like to remove Item C for discussion.
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
May I move or ask to amend to move M as well?
That would be his...
The interlocal agreement with Manatee County.
Yes. All right. So is that, Ms. Coker, you want to make the motion and remove M?
Oh, yes, that's fine.
As well, and the second is okay with it?
I'm...
On request of Mrs. Moore. Okay. So we have a motion for removing C and M. By Ms. Coker and Ms. Barnaby for Mrs. Moore. All right. So is there any other discussion before we proceed? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
So it carries five to zero. Consent agenda, removing C and M. So we'll start with C since it's first. Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I just, I haven't got enough information, and I'm curious as to why we are taking something for, making a decision on something that really has not been brought to CRA yet. I've never had a presentation on this. I, I mean, we barely discussed it. I feel like it was not really discussed. It was brought up, and I expressed some concerns. But I just feel like things are being brought here before. We never voted on this in the CRA that I'm aware of, did we?
So Item C is a resolution that's required by the state of Florida in Florida Statute one sixty-three, Part Three. If you're going to...
Please state your name, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, sorry. Jeff Burton, Executive Director, Bradenton CRA. It is a requirement that if you're going to amend the boundary areas of a CRA that you have to have a resolution stating as such, and finding for slum and blight and/or the lack of affordable housing. This is that resolution. The staff did not ask to have this one property, the Bradenton Women's Club, placed in. It was a request of the board. And so we were just following through. This is an additional item. The reason why it's coming forward is because before you can approve your CRA plan for that area, this resolution has to be approved by the governing board. So this is a resolution determining that that parcel of property meets the requirements of the statute so that it can be added into the downtown community redevelopment area. It was discussed at the CRA board meeting. A formal vote was not taken, and one was not requested by the board. And that's why it's on today's agenda. So if the city council is not prepared to address the resolution, then it can be postponed until the CRA board can meet. But it was staff's interpretation that the board was ready to vote on it, and that's why it's on your agenda today.
And Mr. Burton, a quick question. If this does pass by the city council, that doesn't mean that the CRA board then has to fund anything specific without getting request and also approving it? So nothing will have to be approved? It's just adding in that area?
Yeah, the reason for the area was obvious. This is the Bradenton Women's Club and accessibility to, in particular, historic preservation grants. But those grants, if approved by the CRA board tomorrow, would require an application process, and depending on the board's determination, may come back to the board for...
CRA board.
CRA board, yeah, but not city council.
And that then would be voted on by them. This does not give any money out or anything like that, so people understand that it's more of just a procedural thing to get to the next step.
It is.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just didn't really feel like I had enough information to say that that should be designated as a blighted area. And the reasoning behind, you know, it's not being put into the CRA that's immediately adjacent to it. It's being, I just, I don't feel like I've had enough information as to why it should be done. And I, that's all.
Just for the record, the statute doesn't require that there be a contiguous nature between the properties. And it's not just slum and blight. The statute's very clear that the definition for community redevelopment includes and primarily is slum and blight. But there's a lot after that statement and followed by "or's," or the lack of affordable housing, or economic depression in a coastal resort and tourist area. There are, I think, four or five different elements to what's determined, not just slum and blight, but slum and blight is the primary concern.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-four nineteen.
Item C.
Item C.
All right. Is there a second?
Is it twenty-four nineteen or twenty-four oh nine?
I'm sorry, twenty-four oh nine. I apologize.
Yeah, with this...
Second.
Second. By Mr. Kramer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
No.
All right. Carrie's four to one. Thank you. Mrs. Moore?
I had mentioned to Mr. Rudisil a couple of things, and he did respond to them. They were that I wondered if we should add to Article Six? That we prorate the amounts to be paid on the services if we terminate in the sixty-day window? And in Article Eight, should we make that appropriations language mutual? I don't know what the timing is of this agreement. And Mr. Rudisil did let me know that he had reviewed it and that he felt we were sufficiently covered with the ninety-day termination.
All right. This is in regards to Item M. This city administration interlocal agreement with Manatee County. And I thought, Mr. Perry, it'd be better, Ms. Moore has some questions on it.
Of course. And the questions?
Well, I mean, Mr. Rudisil answered the legal questions, but I didn't know if the timing was such that if we could make these asks to revise the agreement in this manner, or if we really feel like there's...
Local government agreement?
Mm-hmm. That there's no, I don't know if the county has approved it yet or where we're at. But I just thought there were a couple of things that might, that...
Sure. We could take it off the calendar, and you can dig down, drill down on the items that you want corrected. What was it specifically, though, for my edification?
I think one of the things was, for example, on the termination. You know, we have in there that there's an annual amount that would be due from the city to cover the expenses of the employee, but if there's early termination, there aren't provisions in there related to how the cost would be split on that termination, for example.
So we'd like more specificity regarding a prorata apportionment of that?
That was my suggestion.
Right. One of the benefits to this, and I think it's so the public understands it, is this is about the causeway. And what's going to happen is instead of us and with our public works, we were spending a lot more money to try to get garbage out there, to fix things up. We're going to do, with the county has part of the causeway. So why don't we let them maintain all of the causeway to a better standard than we're maintaining it right now and truthfulness? And so I think that, you know, this is something that, in reality, is going to cost us less money for our citizens when you look at it, and be at a better state where they will now, instead of sweeping their little corner, they got a quarter of it, they're going to be able to do it with the bigger staff and all of that. So I think...
That's correct. And we actually went, just for the purposes of council, we actually asked Mr. Cho to do a cost accounting of what he expends for the sanitation functions that are performed out there. And you can see on, and it's kind of non-uniform. Our canisters are on the south side of the causeway, and the county's canisters are on the north side. We send a crew out there twice a week. I think the county does it once a week. And if you go looking at it, both the uniformity and the cost, as it relates to manpower, the equipment having to go out there, and the cost associated with that, the fuel and the like, it's a no-brainer to me, frankly. The compensation to the county is equal to, equivalent to, one FTE, full-time employee. Mr. Keys and Ross with Landscape and Grounds handles the landscaping of the area out there. And that involves basically trimming and some beach improvements and things like that, the bollards that get constantly knocked down and have to be replaced and the like. And so he has costs out of his section and division that are associated with that as well. And so ultimately, at the end of the day, we thought it was very efficient from a variety of different perspectives to have the county. And as you pointed out, they already maintain all of the north side.
Most of it.
Most of it, yeah, yeah. And they also provided us with a video of the improvements that they wanted to make out there, really do a facelift to the area, make it look a lot nicer, some rope chain...
Bollards.
Bollards, rope chains, I call them, but they have the big rope in between to kind of prevent people from going to places where they shouldn't and those kinds of things. Sinage and improvements to the bathroom.
Consistency of garbage cans, it won't be the big green ugly garbage cans.
Right.
They have the, that goes out to the beach and sweeps the machine, which we don't have.
Right.
So, you know, it's going to be a lot of things. Ms. Coker, did you have some comments to that?
Main thing, I was going to say they have the sand rake, which we don't have. And is it possible that we could make the change about the prorata from here? Because I'd like to get this started sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
I mean, is that just a one...
Maybe we can give it to the, with approval with that, you know, talking with the county and you'll see if there's a way to...
Is that the only thing? Because I'd rather do it once and be done with it to the satisfaction.
That's what I'm saying. Make that...
Right. The county has not approved it as of yet. And...
But we do have support.
We have support from the administration. And generally speaking, the smaller government would sign first, in my opinion. And the larger government that's accepting the responsibility would sign secondly, if you want to look at procedurally, signatory processes.
Ms. Moore?
I defer to counselor and Mr. Rudisil.
Right. Well, I was just going to say that I don't, I'm not adverse to the action of the county helping with the, and the cost savings benefit on our end. I think that's great. It was just those specific, those two items on the contract and where we were in time, if we could ask for those little changes, if we're, you know, if the horse is out of the gate, then I think that the benefit is worth it. But if we have the ability to ask for a couple of little revisions, there's two. The first one is about prorating, if we terminate early, the payment and the appropriations. They, you know, their obligations are contingent on appropriations, and I thought that maybe that should be mutual.
I don't have an objection to either one of the suggested revisions. I mean, if the council wants to approve it, subject to those changes, we could certainly make them and send them over. That would obviously be subject to the review and approval of the county and the county attorney's office.
Just one further point. I mean, when you talk about subject to appropriations, there is, we don't specifically put an express covenant legally in our interlocal government agreements, whether it's this interlocal government agreement or another, any other interlocal government agreement. I've yet to see it, at least. Generally speaking, when you do interlocal government agreements, where I've done them in the past, there, sometimes there'll be a covenant expressly in there. The covenant is to do two things. One, to budget and to appropriate. And think about that. They have to put it in their budget, and they have to appropriate. It's kind of getting in the details. It's almost, to me, expressed that if you do an interlocal government agreement, you're making a commitment to budget and appropriate.
For that year.
For that year. And everything is subject to appropriations under state, I think, local government laws, to an annual appropriation. But we can do those two provisos. It's not a problem at all. And you can vote on it today, you can send it back, and we can wait till the county does their deal. I don't know if they can get it on their next agenda, what their timing is. Right now, I think if you want it sooner rather than later, and particularly where we're at into snowbird season out there and coming into the summer and some of the improvements.
Spring break, all the things.
Spring break and everything else, right.
I think they're ready to go if we're ready to go.
It'd be nice to kind of get them moving.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll move to approve... I'll move to, uh, approve it subject to Mr. Rudisil making those two revisions. I think he's clear about what I was.
I am.
Getting at.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero.
The mayor with the chair's permission, if Mr. Williams could assume.
Come back.
Position, come back, uh, he started pitching, and we'd like him to finish the game. He's pitching.
We're playing softball, not baseball.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
All right, Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. So anyone wishing to address City Council during the following public hearings will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. The next item is item 7A, Ordinance 4027, second reading and public hearing. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, providing for an amendment to the city of Bradenton land use atlas. Changing zoning from R2 medium-density residential to PDP planned development project for the properties located at 1201 27th Street East and 2906 11th Avenue East. Parcel ID numbers are 1387000050 and 1387200007. More particularly described herein, approving a PDP site plan for 66 semi-detached residential units. Subjects, excuse me, subject to stipulations as conditions of approval, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning.
Good morning, um, City Council Mayor. This is, uh, Jamie Schindlwolf with the Planning Department, and I have been sworn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I apologize, Jamie. I was just gonna say, these two items are for the same project. If you wanted to open them together in the same public hearing, you could do that.
We'll have her read the second one. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Item 7B is the final order approving preliminary subdivision plat SU.23.4843. Final order of the city of, final order of the City Council for the city of Bradenton approving a preliminary subdivision plat number SP.23.4843 for a subdivision plat in a planned development project, zoning district for a plus or minus 12.19 acre parcel located at 1201 27th Street East and 2906 11th Avenue East, Bradenton, Florida. And more particularly described herein, providing for findings of fact, providing for conclusions of law, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
All right, great. Um, so the first, um, this, this one needs to go first, this rezoning, um, for the plat to make sense and meet code. So, um, what they are requesting as stated is a rezone from R2 to planned development project. This is the subject site, the subject parcels. And here you have the zoning and the future land use as it stands today. Um, the important thing to note here with the future land use of res medium, um, the maximum density would be 10 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density, uh, for this project is only 5.4 dwelling units per acre. So they're still within their density allowance, um, on this, this property. So planned development project zoning is an alternative to our conventional zoning districts, R1, R2, et cetera, in areas guided by the land use regulations. This allows for some flexibility, but projects are still subject to some standards that we will get into. And the important thing here is that they're seeking to, uh, build semi-detached dwellings. So that's a one-family dwelling attached to one other one-family dwelling by a common vertical wall, but each dwelling is located on a separate lot, so commonly known as a villa. Um, and we, on our use table, we don't actually allow these in any districts other than planned development. And so that's what's triggered this rezoning before you today. So here you can see the plan as they've proposed it. And if, you know, we zoom in on the lots, you can see that one, two, three, and four are all on separate lots. The plat that they currently have for this, um, this land looks pretty much the same, except units one and two are on one lot. Unit three and four are on one lot. So that's what the difference really is today for the project. On the left, you can see our standards for conventional zoning districts, and then on the right, what they're proposing for this PDP. Um, they've stated that the maximum height will be 35 feet. Um, and there is a note regarding the maximum impervious surface ratio, which will be 70%. That matches the R3 standard, um, and they are adjacent to an R3 zoned property. So that's fairly consistent with the area around them. So just to point out a few of those additional PDP standards, um, when we look at open space and recreation area, this is a figure that was provided by the applicant showing that they are providing, um, like, recreation area that meets our code. Um, you can see around the pond there, they are providing a bike rack, they're providing some benches and a compacted pedestrian path, uh, so people can take a walk, take a jog. Um, they are exceeding the code requirement of a half-acre recreation space with that area there. And as far as open space goes, they exceed the code requirement of 25% total. Uh, as far as, uh, the parking goes, they do have a requirement to have parking over that recreation space. And visitor parking is required to be located there at a ratio of one space per 10 dwelling units. They're required to have six, and they are showing seven spaces right there. Regarding buffers, they, they have requested to reduce their overall, um, buffer from 25 feet, as the code states, down to 20, which is allowed per code if you all pass that stipulation. Um, but you can see that in addition to the 20-foot buffer, um, the blue dotted areas I've highlighted are a 20, or a six-foot, excuse me, PVC fence. And then there's enhanced landscaping on that red, uh, longer dash line, um, to the far left. And then regarding accessory structures, um, they are providing some setbacks for accessory structures here. They, it's okay, they have stated that accessory buildings and structures will meet Section 5.1 of the code, and the fences will be PVC, and that is written on the plans themselves. Uh, because of the small lot sizes, uh, you may wish to discuss what kind of accessory structures they see possibly even going on these lots. Um, but they have provided that it will follow what the current land use regulations say. So finally, staff recommends approval. Planning Commission met on December 20th and also recommended approval with the stipulation regarding the reduction in the buffer area. And we're happy to take any questions. And should I stop here, Scott, or do I go into the plat? We should wait, right? Let them vote on this, and then.
No, I think you can, you can go into the plat.
All right, so. I do also have a presentation for the plat, and I will go quick because it's pretty much the same idea. So regarding the plat, you'll see, zip through here, so here's the plat. Um, just showing the, the lots are all platted there, individual, um, units on each lot. Uh, they are, they do have the recreation area platted as a tract. Um, their drainage is to meet SWIFTMUD standards. They have three proposed local streets that will be constructed to city standards. There are easements included, uh, to accommodate public utilities. As we discussed, the private recreation area, sewer and water will be provided by the city. We do have a school capacity report that states that that, uh, the capacity is adequate there. And overall, provided that the rezoning to PDP is approved by City Council, um, staff recommends approval of this plat. This is a preliminary plat. Um, final plat will ultimately come before you as a consent item once, you know, they get to that point in the process.
All right, questions? Vice Mayor Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Schindlwolf, can you talk about the accessory structures and what might be allowed? As well as, my question also is, because they share a common wall, and they're like right next door to each other, if the two individuals or families agreed to, could they share an accessory structure, and could that make it larger?
Hmm, uh, I mean, so the accessory structures in our code, you know, are, I can't list them all, but sheds, detached garages.
That's what I'm talking about, like, a shed.
You know, things like that. Um, I am gonna look at Robin, but I, I would say that would be, you know, we'd be putting a structure over a lot line, and we wouldn't usually allow that.
Okay. Unless, unless they provided for that in their PDP, I mean, and they could, uh, potentially, uh, provide for reduced setbacks or some kind of shared configuration. They could provide that in the PDP if they wanted to. They could come back for an amendment, uh, to do that. But typically, no. Um, if you got a plat of a lot, you, your rules apply to that individual platted lot. So, thank you.
So what you're saying, Ms. Barnaby, is they couldn't bust a hole in the wall and have one big structure?
No, what I'm saying is, cause I'm, I'm thinking if you have, let's say we have two families that end up in the same villa. And they have small children, and small children come with encumbrances, such as a lot of toys, a lot of, uh, you know, tricycles and bicycles and that sort of thing. So if they, if they thought about it, would they be able to get a larger shed to put these things in? That was my question.
Right.
Outside.
For outside. I'm not talking about, you know, I'm, we're not getting into Sister Wives and all that stuff either, so.
Right, yeah. All right. Any other questions?
And we do have the applicant here as well.
So, um, does the applicant wanna come up, do a presentation, and then questions? And then we'll go to public comment on both, and then we'll vote separately on each one.
Just get out of there. I clicked out of it. Do you wanna try to open it again? Do you want mine up? Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I don't know, you can, take a slide.
All right, take a slide. Let me slide. Um, good morning, Mr. Mayor, uh, counsel Kyle Grimes. I'm attorney with the law firm of Grimes Galvano, uh, here at 1023 Bradenton, uh, Manti Avenue West in Bradenton. I have been sworn. Uh, I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Jordan Creek at Bradenton East LLC. Um, Jamie did a great job of, of walking through this project. We've been, uh, working with her very closely through this process. We appreciate that. Um, as she indicated, we are, uh, requesting a rezone to PDP with a site plan for 33 semi-detached buildings for a total of 66 units. Um, I think Jamie went through a lot of it, but I just wanted to give a little additional background on, on why we're here today, before I have our planner, Ms. Linda Stork, come up and walk through a, a couple more specifics, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, you may recognize this property. We, we, as indicated, we're here back in, um, March of 2022, where we received, uh, preliminary plat approval for 33 lots, for 33, uh, two-family dwellings, which is a, a villa on a single lot. Um, since that time, our, our client kind of shift gears in what they're looking to do with this property, and move away from, from more rental product base, which is typically what you have when you have two units on a single lot. You're, you're kind of stuck in that, that area of renting, and, and really wanting to get to a fee simple ownership where they can sell off each individual unit with a corresponding lot. Um, without having to go through the, the long, difficult process of the condominium aspect. It, it's just something that's, uh, gotten more and more difficult over the years. And, and these semi-detached units, as your code calls them, are something that have really gained a lot of popularity over, over the past few years. Uh, we see them a lot throughout the county. You actually do have this product type in the city of Bradenton with the Amberly Development, uh, just east of the Braden River. Um, that one, I did just look at the, uh, aerial, and this is gonna be very similar product type to that. They, I don't even think they had any accessory structures in the, in the backyard. But you do have setback requirements. We did not, uh, ask to allow shared ones. I, I don't think it's a horrible idea, and, and certainly if that's something down the line that they wanted to do, we could come back for, for an amendment to that PD and add that. Uh, I don't think that's a horrible idea, if they, you know, sharing space. But typically, you're talking about, you know, a little shed that meets setbacks for, you know, your lawnmower, things like that. Um, but anyways, so, so back to the matter at hand, so, um, you know, we wanted to go through and, and do this plating process so we can have these individual lots. Uh, but as, as Jamie mentioned, although you have a code definition for it, uh, semi-detached units, that, that, that term is not found anywhere else in the code. And although we have R2 zoning here, which is, is, the purpose is for two-family dwelling units, there was some ambiguity on whether that includes semi-detached. So it's staff's position that we, we bring this forward as a rezone, uh, so we can be real specific on allowing those and making sure we designate our, our setbacks and our zero lot line for the, the shared wall area. Uh, so that's what we did. And, um, you know, by and large, this is the same project that we came before you back in, in 2022 with the preliminary plat, um, with a couple minor exceptions. One, we're, we're dividing it into, uh, 66 lots instead of 33, but keeping the exact same unit count, 66 units. Um, and because this is PDP, we are adding some buffering. Uh, we're specifically designating some recreation open space, uh, all things that are not required under the R2 zoning. So it kind of adds a little additional, uh, preservation of those open space and, and buffering going this route. Um, from the, uh, on our slides, which I couldn't have opened, on the previously approved preliminary plat, we did have one additional access out to 27th. That was actually something that was removed previously, and when we were going through the last SIP process under the previous plat, uh, at the request of Manti County, they just had some, some issues with some, uh, roadway separation there. So that's something we worked out with the county, as well as your, uh, you know, fire department and, and emergency staff. So, um, those are really the, the only big significant changes that we see from, from what we, uh, have approved under the previous preliminary plat. And of course, we have the plat before you today as well, just to, to codify these, uh, this proposed development. Um, so I, you know, I, we do have our planner, Linda Stork, here who could walk through a lot more of the specifics, but I think Jamie really covered, uh, pretty much everything. And, uh, if you'd like, we could just open for questions, or we can provide additional detail if you should need some.
So I was gonna make a statement. I like homeownership a lot better than rental properties because homeowners seem to take care of their pro, their properties more than, than rental properties, as we know. So, uh, that's just, I'm, I'm glad that's transitioning. Uh, any other questions by the council?
I'd like to also.
Yes, Ms. Coachman.
I also, um, advocate more for homeownership. Um, one thing, it, it's, it creates stability, as opposed to a lot of rental, uh, situations where people come and go, and there's just no investment whatsoever. Um, my question is, and, and this is so standard for these types of projects, that parking, like, on-street parking, and, and when one particular family has a birthday party or whatever, parking is such a craziness. I, but I know that standard, that you really don't.
Yeah, we, we've.
For that.
We stayed with your, uh, standard requirements. Um, we do have sufficient parking, we feel, for each individual unit, as well as the additional parking for, in the rec-open space area. Uh, it's something we looked into to try to not provide that too much on-street parking, just cause it can, you know, block up.
You don't provide it, but they do it.
I understand, but, and often in these, these developments, they do end up with a HOA and stuff that has regulation authority over that as well.
It's just those birthday parties.
I understand.
Only once a year.
And, and on the, the homeowner comment, we also feel that's, uh, a little more, uh, compatible with the adjacent area that are all, you know, for sale units.
It's standard, I know.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Moore?
Are the three proposed local streets, they're gonna be city streets, or they're gonna be private?
They're not gonna be private streets. We have them designated as public, public streets. And, uh, particularly the, the one you see there on the south, that's one that your fire department really wanted to see put in place and connect to the development to the east. That gives you a little additional, uh, east-west movement there.
All right. Thank you. So we go to the public hearing. No other questions? All right, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on both? Um, Ordinance 4027 and Ordinance, where is it there?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It's the final order approving preliminary subdivision plat SU.23.4843.
Okay, all right. So both, both public hearings on both items. Public hearings open. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? open. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Is there any further staff comments? Mr. Perry?
May I just briefly?
Uh, just wait till you get up to the podium.
Sure. Rob Perry, City Administrator for the city of Bradenton. Um, I, I wanna comment a little bit on applicant's, uh, uh, comments on this situation and, and in a positive, positive way. This particular development, I think, is a, um, a private development that is something of a model for dealing with the, the commercial side of affordable housing. Because what it does is it allows ownership of, um, of, of fee ownership outside condominiumization and compliance with a very cumbersome state regulation that is required for condominiums. And this type of ownership allows lenders to lend on these projects at a price point that takes advantage of, 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 of a density and land value use that makes sense because the price points on these are gonna come in, um, where they're much more affordable than some of the things we see in the city. Additionally, as relates to commercial redevelopment of residential property, Bradenton is a city that might have a couple of, of clusters of, of good-sized assemblages that can do this to bring about density within our codes and at the same time meet the requirements of, of stormwater, of, of dedicated roadways that are meeting city standards with other types of use requirements because there's still the setbacks. And as, as to Counselor Barnaby's question, they could go in, a landowner could go in for variance and try to get a setback for something like that or that was proposed and the like, but you still want those buffer zones between the lots to a certain extent. Lastly, um, the semi-detached issue that Kyle just kind of vaguely talked about is very ambiguous in our code. And I think we do want to get some clarification and we work with the applicant and kudos to Robin and Greg to try to get the applicant and us to be able to get this development where we could recommend approval. Jamie did a great job and I hope to see more of these is, is the point.
Thank you. All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Do we need two motions or one?
We need two. We'll do the first one and then the second one. So we're just on, um, A on seven. So Chair, will entertain a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve ordinance four-zero-two-seven.
So second?
Second.
Ms. Coachman? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
And four.
Yes.
All right. Carrie's five to zero. And then, uh, Chair, will entertain a motion on item B?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coachman?
Move to approve of the final order for case SU twenty-three dot four-eight-four-three.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Barnaby, our Vice Mayor Barnaby. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I do want to thank our staff and the applicant for the fact that they are looking at continuing a street grid of some type. Nothing frustrates me more than when I'm out in East County and nothing is interconnected. So if you want to go anywhere, you have to go to State Road sixty-four or you have to go to Moccaso and Wallo. Or you have, you know, it's, it's, nothing's interconnected. And that is, I think, one of the strengths that we have in this city is the fact that we have a connected street grid. And I know that sometimes people give you pushback on it, but I think it's wonderful and I really appreciate you doing it.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
Item seven C is the second reading in public hearing for ordinance four-zero-two-four. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida vacating a portion of a fifteen-foot alley as shown on Lot Five, Block C, Graham Subdivision, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book One, page one-eight-seven of the public records of Manatee County, Florida, and more particularly described herein, being generally located south of Eighth Avenue East and west of Twelfth Street East, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances and conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning.
Good morning. Greg DeLong, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, and I have been sworn in. Thank you to Ms. Milton for reading that long introduction. Um, this is a right-of-way vacation. Um, the applicant is Yolanda Hart. This, it's adjacent to property at eleven-thirty, East Avenue East. There's the parcel ID number. This vacation is approximately a hundred and seven, or seven-hundred-and-nine square feet. Um, it is in our T4R zoning district, um, has a future land use of res medium. Um, it is currently an unapproved alley and, um, again, the purpose is to vacate that alleyway. Um, as mentioned, it's about seven-hundred-and-nine-square-foot area. It's fifteen-foot portion. On the western portion, the eastern portion was previously vacated by City Council in twenty-twenty-two, August of twenty-twenty-two to be exact, with ordinance number three-zero-nine-nine. If approved, the requested portion of the right-of-way would transfer to the owner at eleven-thirty, East Avenue, or Eighth Avenue East. Um, the applicant is requesting this vacation in order to extend their parcel, complete the vacation of the right-of-way, and to be able to install a fence to establish a boundary between the applicant's property and the property to the east. Here is a location map of the property and the area in red is the area to be vacated. Here is a zoning map. Again, the area in red is the area to be vacated and a future land use map. And again, the red, area in red is to be vacated. Here is a survey map. As you can see, the eastern portion has been vacated previously. Uh, the area in red is the area to be vacated. It just runs the length of the property at eleven-thirty, Eighth Avenue East. Here are some photos showing the existing conditions over there. Um, the area that was previously vacated has already become a driveway parking area for new construction that has occurred. And here is looking south from Eighth Avenue East at the remaining portion of the unapproved alley. There are sections of the land use regs that need to be met, um, specifically two-point-two-point-seven, um, when we do a vacation request and bring it before Planning Commission and City Council. Um, and the applicants are also required to submit letters from utility companies stating that there are no utilities in the subject portions to be vacated. And the applicant did do that and all public utility companies did sign off on the requested vacation. Uh, staff does recommend approval of case RV twenty-three-point-four-two-nine-nine with no stipulations and Planning Commission met on December twentieth of twenty-twenty-three, which seems like ages ago now. Um, and, uh, they did recommend approval with a vote of six-zero. The applicant or the property owner is here if you have any specific questions about the, uh, application for them, but I'm here for any other questions.
Questions, Ms. Clerk?
I have a question. Can you go back to the photo of the property right there?
Yep.
Okay. It looks like there's utilities right there.
It looks like a guy wire.
In the front.
In the front.
And a post.
Yeah. You're talking about the yellow thing coming down.
I, I just, I mean, yeah, it's, it, but, so you're saying that there's no utilities, need for utilities there?
Yep. Going back towards the trees.
I just like to ask, cause I, I read that and I.
It looks confusing when you look at the photo too. Yeah.
I mean, everybody's okay. I just don't want something after the fact to be.
Well, they want, it sounds like they want to put up a fence just to have some private area inside where they, where they can put up a fence.
And the utility companies, as mentioned, did sign off stating that there are no utilities in that area.
Mr. Kramer?
Yep.
But the fence isn't gonna come out to the street.
No, they will meet code requirements for the fence.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? And this is a public hearing. So does the applicant want to say anything before the public hearing? Okay. All right. Well, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Close the public hearing and Chair will entertain a motion?
I move, oh, I move to approve ordinance four-zero-two-four.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Coachman? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
All right. Approve five to zero. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Item seven D is the second reading in public hearing for ordinance four-zero-two-nine. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida approving and adopting the amended redevelopment plan for the central community redevelopment area. Finding the amended community redevelopment plan for the central community redevelopment area to be consistent with the city of Bradenton's comprehensive plan. Finding notice of the amended redevelopment plan for the central community redevelopment area to be in compliance with a notice of provisions of Chapter one-sixty-three Florida statute. Providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances and conflict and resolutions and conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Do we have to do them all separately? All right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Jeff Burton, CRA Director, I've been sworn at. Um, this is a, this is a, um, requirement of Florida Statute one-sixty-three to adopt an updated CRA plan. The next three ordinances will be the same. We'll take each one of them individually. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask or answer them.
Does the City Council of the city of Bradenton have any questions for Mr. Burton? Hearing none. Um, I guess we'll go to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion?
And, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add for the record, this was, these are the amended plans that were recommended by the CRA board. They were then noticed to the taxing authorities. Um, and so that I'm assuming we had no objections or responses from, from the taxing authorities and now it's coming for a final hearing.
And we had a public hearing at our last meeting about this, if I'm not mistaken.
We had a first reading.
First reading and we opened it to the public.
We did.
And we had no comments at that time either.
Correct.
On all three of them. Right. So, all right. So, um, pleasure of the City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coachman?
Move to approve ordinance four-zero-two-nine. Get that right out of my glasses.
All right. Is it second by Ms. Barnaby? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. All right. So, um, Madam Clerk?
Next is the second reading in public hearing for ordinance four-zero-three-zero. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida renaming the Bradenton Community Redevelopment Area to the Downtown Community Redevelopment Area. Expanding the boundaries of the Downtown Community Redevelopment Area. Approving and adopting the amended redevelopment plan for the Downtown Community Redevelopment Area. Finding the amended community redevelopment plan for the Downtown Community Redevelopment Area to be consistent with the city of Bradenton's comprehensive plan. Finding the notice of the amended redevelopment plan for the Downtown Community Redevelopment Area to be in compliance with a notice of provisions of Chapter one-sixty-three Florida statutes. Providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances and resolutions and conflict, and providing for an effective date.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, Jeff Burton, CRA Director, I've been sworn in. Uh, same comments as the previous ordinance.
Okay. So, Mr. Rudesell?
The only thing additional that I would add, Mr. Mayor, is this is the, uh, this is the ordinance that would expand the boundaries of the renamed Downtown Community Redevelopment Area.
All right. So, um, any questions from the Bradenton City Council members? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance forty-thirty.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Barnaby? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Madam Clerk?
Next is the second reading in public hearing for ordinance four-zero-three-one. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida renaming the Fourteenth Street Community Redevelopment Area to the Tamiami Trail Community Redevelopment Area. Approving and adopting the amended redevelopment plan for the Tamiami Trail Community Redevelopment Area. Finding the amended community redevelopment plan for the Tamiami Trail Community Redevelopment Area to be consistent with the city of Bradenton's comprehensive plan. Finding notice of the amended redevelopment plan for the Tamiami Trail Community Redevelopment Area to be in compliance with a notice of provisions of Chapter one-sixty-three Florida statutes. Providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances and resolutions and conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Burton?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Burton, CRA Director, just one comment on all three of these that I did not mention that you should be aware of. All three CRA plans now extend the CRA timeline to September thirtieth, twenty-forty. That is the end date of all the CRAs you currently have in the city of Bradenton. But just so you know, that, that's written into the plans and is required by state. Other than that, same comments as before.
Any questions or, I'll just make one comment to that point there that I think it was, was a good idea by our CRA to do all three at the same time because if we had two that sunsetted out and one that was by itself, it would have been difficult to manage it because the funding and all the other ways that you share might have been. So I think, I think that by our CRA board is, is a very good progress forward while extending it a few more years to try to, to do some good things with, that will go along with several projects that could happen in the city that could bring tens of millions of dollars into the CRAs that will help some of what we talked about earlier with StanTech and some of those things that the city's doing and planning that is, is good management. So I appreciate that and I appreciate our administrative staff really working to make things better. You know, long-term, when I would assume that most of us in that part of it probably wouldn't be sitting in these seats again. Now, if you went back to the previous councils, they were here for, for tens of years. So, um, we all want to be here, but I think that it comes down to, we're setting up the future pretty well. And that's the important part that I've always thought and I feel that that's the way this council wants to do to set things up to, to proceed. So, thank you. Uh, if no further comments, then we'll go to the public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance forty-thirty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Mrs. Moore, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you all.
And thank you to all your staff and everything for doing what they do. So, all right. Um, Madam Clerk?
We do not have anything on the agenda under new business or unfinished business.
All right. Um, council reports will start in Ward two.
Well, um, we got a lot of business done today. That was good. Uh, y'all may not realize that I'm not the only one getting older these days. Our CRA director had a birthday last week. So happy birthday, Dr. Jeff Burton, and thank you for all that you do. And I think that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, sir. Um, I had the pleasure on Friday night and I wasn't sure why I signed up to do it on a Friday night, but, uh, of being a ticket taker at the fair, um, great turnout. Uh, hadn't gotten quite as chilly as it did Saturday, but it was a lot of people there. So it was a really fun, fun time. Was able to do that, uh, with Braden Kiwanis. So I was very happy to attend. Um, my condolences to, uh, the family of James Wilkinson. His mother, Carol, passed away, um, yesterday in Tallahassee, uh, after brief illness. So, uh, thoughts and prayers with them. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Um, I had just a couple of, um, thoughts or questions that I've shared with staff, but I would like to share with you all. Um, the first one was, and actually I think it, and this is a little one, um, but maybe somebody knows the answer other than, I haven't figured it out yet. Um, but it goes, it speaks to your ward, what we are doing with the old Fire Station Two property. And actually, I should back up and say the first thing I was gonna mention is I had a lovely conversation with Mr. Perry about, um, a conversation I had with Ms. Kim Clayback about our, the status of our vulnerability assessment project. And it is her opinion that if we could give them some thoughts on our long-term goals or visions for air, pocket areas of the city, um, that we could include them in the vulnerability assessment. And then that helps us fast-track, uh, getting dollars for projects. and then that helps us fast-track, uh, getting dollars for projects. Um, and so, we talked a little bit about having a workshop to talk about that, and I think it's a great idea, so I would love for us to be able to make that happen. Um, that said, though, if we're thinking about doing some goal planning for the city bef, you know, as a step towards, uh, strategic planning, that is in Ward five technically. Um, it, it, it borders Ward four, um, and so I just thought that would be also a good topic whenever we are able to kind of get a workshop going, to see what kind of possibility we want to, uh, do with that. Um, and that's pretty much it. I just, I want to encourage us to be able to get a, a workshop going to be able to accomplish that, because my understanding from Ms. Clayback is that we should get thoughts to her about what to include in the vulnerability assessment by the summer, June. Pretty much it.
Thank you, Ms. Coachman.
Sounds good, sounds good. Um, just a quick statement, and it's something that I've said many times, uh, how I feel the need for some of the older neighborhoods to, in some way, form an association. When we were listening to the presentation from StanTech, um, it, it just goes to show that those pockets of the city aren't even listed in that area, in, in those, um, stakeholders and, and nonprofits and what have you that we were looking at, and it's simply because it hasn't really unified as it used to be. So, I wish there was a way for us to be able to guide, um, those pocket areas of developing a little small association so that we could hear from them, uh, as easy as it is to talk to some of the subdivisions homeowner, uh, homeowners associations. Um, and I know of a few people that are trying to form them, but I think they need a little guidance, and if there was any way we could be a part of that, that would be great, and it would help in us really reaching everyone. Uh, other than that, I, I'll get off that soapbox, but, um, I'm just happy to announce I have a new grandbaby.
Ooh.
Um, so now, Renaya, Riley, and Rachelle have a cousin, lovely. She was just born this morning, seven pound, five ounces.
Oh, my gosh. Yay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, okay. Uh, first, I, I'd like to say thank you to all for supporting the inter-local agreement for the Causeway. I think it's going to be a game changer out there. Really excited about what their plans are, and I also want to comment that, um, you know, that, that, it's that working together with the county that I think the medians are starting to really look good. It's really snarling up the traffic right now, but, um, I think, I think it's, I think our, it's making a big difference in creating that sense of place and, and just saying, hey, we care about our community, and it, just a much more pleasant drive up Manatee Avenue, which is, a lot of it's up closer to where I'm at, so I see it daily. Um, I also wanted to, um, thank the convention and Visitors Bureau, went and did the tour of the new hotel, and I'm excited. That is going to be a big game changer for this area, and I think you're going to see it bring a lot of, uh, a, a lot of, uh, visitors, and I think it's going to help with our water taxi, you know, and just bring people down and introduce them to the city of Bradenton, and so, um, it was, it was nice to have an opportunity to look there, and I'm excited for the future. That's it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, kind of hit on the water taxi while you brought that up, that was a good thing. Um, it did run a couple weekends ago, and then the weather last weekend kind of didn't cooperate, and, uh, it's going to be back on this weekend, and they're looking forward to a good weekend. Um, at times, you know, it's, it's, some people look at the glass half-empty. When we were on it, when there was twenty people and twenty-four people on the route in and out, you know, that glass is half-full, especially for the first day in a, a really cold weather day. Um, they're really working now, and, and even talking about the convention center and hearing all of that, um, information the other day at the TDC meeting, that, talking about how that really could change the dynamics of how people get back and forth to Palmetto, and we always talk about traffic, but if we can take one, two, three, ten, fifteen, twenty cars off the road and get people back and forth, they're going to want to be here more, so. That, it's something that, you know, yeah, it starts a little slow, but then it builds up and it's going good, and there is no ad valorem taxes being paid. That was one of the things that, that came out, that, oh, well, we're wasting our tax dollars. It's all through the TDC and the county transportation system, MCAT, so, um, you know, it's none of the city taxpayers' money, which is important to remember, you know, from that. Public Works information-wise is good. I know that, uh, you know, we've had with Jim retiring back then, and I know Mr. Perry and, and Mr. Williams are working on some opportunity to improve the whole public work structure, which is very important, because, you know, when you talk about some of the things when we were a, a smaller city, and you could have the structure at what it was, it really wasn't working as efficiently as what we're asking now with many projects going forward, and I think that was important in, uh, working with Mr. Perry through the, the mayor's office and that, and to talk about some of the things you brought up, Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Coachman, about some logistical things that might give us a process, which we didn't have before, is in the process. So, that's important, and engaging opportunity for some of our staff to utilize their benefits of their, um, profession and their direction, instead of having them like a shotgun, having forty things to do, and it's just hard to do. So, that's, that's going through a process that is going to change, and will be coming back into the council soon, I believe, on that part of it. Um, I want to agree with the medians on Manatee Avenue. You know, there was some by our tree board that had some questions about some of the trees and that. It was very important to remind everybody that, um, in the early two thousands, there was some medians done, and, you know, with DOT and Keep Manatee Beautiful, and our tree board, that was very important. Well, the major trees that were on those had really outgrown the medians. If you looked at them, they were getting hit by trucks and really to the point of damaging the tree. So, um, working with the inter-local that this city council did a while back with the county, those trees were transplanted, um, they were, um, the black olive shady ladies were actually transplanted, moved and transplanted, so, you know, they didn't just go away. Um, some of the ground shrubbery was just outgrown itself, so now the county is finishing up. The county's done it all over Manatee County in different, uh, zones and that, but, but now it's on Manatee Avenue, and that's another inter-local agreement that I think is very important, because the county is going to maintain those now instead of DOT doing it, which we know DOT is all of the state, and they don't have the capability of doing that part. So, that's going well, and I think that'll be done, even though with the traffic, I have got some comments about that, but timing is everything, and it's just a matter of, that'll be done ve- very soon. Um, let's see, what else? Oh, you know, and then two, two things last. There was a little confusion. Last week on the agenda, Mr. Perry had an administrative update about City Hall property. Um, it was basically just administrative update to tell us where they were with the company that we picked last April, to say that, uh, you know, here's where we are, here's the update, and we're still working through the, uh, negotiations of an, of a, um, update. So, it really wasn't anything different than what we did last April, just an update. I know there were some headlines in some medias that really weren't what it was, but we just want to make sure the public understands that nothing has changed from last April, it was just an update on the development agreement, and it's going to come back in March, hopefully, with that part of it. So, yeah, it's just kind of clarifying the record that when people put stuff out in the social media and in the media, if it's wrong, it's wrong, you know, so that's, that's important. And then the biggest thing that's coming up, um, is soon is Yagata Regatta. You know, the Ninth Annual Regatta i- is coming, um, kind of changing it up a little bit this year on Friday night at Rossi Park. There's going to be a concert. Clydesdales are planning on being down there, which, you know, really a, a great thing to come into town and, and promote. Um, and then also the drone show, which, you know, I've only seen pictures and a little bit of the drone show last year, because last, uh, Saturday night in the regatta last year, it didn't get to go off because of the wind, but they're actually going to do it Friday night now, and for both sides of the river, and it's going to be very interesting and exciting to see that. And then also Saturday will be the regatta, and then Saturday night will be the Pirates' Fest. So, it's going to be a, a packed full weekend of Yagata Regatta and getting our pirates kicked off for spring training. So, um, I just want to thank all of the staff, thank for Mr. Williams, you know, he has spoke a lot today for sitting in for Mr. Perry for the early part of it. So, um, got to say a lot, and we appreciate what you're doing, and I think we are progressing, obviously having StanTech come in today for that next step, that next level of what we're doing, having obviously the traffic study that's going on, and then also, um, thank Mr. Perry especially for his leadership and what he's doing to really, you know, take huge bites of the apple with, you know, and really working towards making it, things better for our city for long-term. And that's, again, one of my goals as this seat, is how we set us up for the future, so when we're not here, some of the things that we look back on and say, wow, you know, because nobody's going to remember our names, they're just going to remember if there's traffic or not, or if things are done, and if we can make those, well, they'll remember yours, Ms. Barnaby. Vice Mayor. So, anyway, now, you got, and, and, and having fun, you know, I mean, it's, again, we've got to have fun with what you're doing, and you also got to get stuff done, so that's important. So, thank you to everybody, and now move to any department heads. Anything specific? Seeing none, Mr. Williams?
Since I had a chance to talk a lot in this meeting, I'm gonna go ahead and say some. So, just to kind of piggyback off of what the mayor talked about, um, with making some improvements, not only in Public Works, but kind of citywide, so, two words that you're going to hear a lot come out of the administrative office is succession and redundancy. So, what we're trying to do is set up a plan for all of our departments to be able to run consistently organ, eh, eh, with a plan, and then we're kind of regardless of who's in the seat. Um, so what we, we, in the past, we've always kind of hoped for the best if somebody retired or quit or won the lottery or what have you, so we're kind of, we're trying to take some of that hope out of the, you know, out of the equation. So, um, obviously, uh, you know, resources will be needed for that, and, you know, we'll be very diligent on how we allocate those resources, but, um, that is something that we've worked, we're working diligently currently with Public Works, but we will be doing that across the board for all departments. Um, the last thing I want to do is kind of recognize our folks, um, some of our superintendents, section managers, um, assistant directors in Public Works. They've really stepped up to the plate. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback, um, on some of the changes that we're, we're talking about. We've included them in the discussions, so it is a team effort, and I just wanted to say thank you from myself and Mr. Perry, um, that they, they really, they're putting their own skin in the game. They're very vested in, in making sure that we make very positive improvements, so it's a great department, as we have many, many great personnels in all of our departments, but we've, we've spent a lot of time with our Public Works staff currently, and, uh, I just wanted to say thank you. Okay, now I'm done.
Thank you. Um, anything else? Yes, sir, Mr. Jones?
Dean Jones, Assistant Director, Acting Director. I just want to say that, uh, we're working with the Manatee Board, uh, for an art project that you'll see going up. Uh, the mayor's kind of driven the project for us to do. You'll be seeing banners going up, uh, in some different areas. Uh, once the LPGA is done, you'll start seeing these banners up and down the corridor and Twelfth Avenue, also Riverwalk, and, um, also Riverside Drive East. These banners were done, or the artwork was done by children, uh, within Manatee County, and then those, that artwork was selected, go up on the banners, so it's a fa, it's a great project. Uh, we're also doing VOTA. We have over a hundred and seventy banners to go into that area, so when you start seeing this funky artwork going up, you know, it's just us being able to, uh, connect with our children in the county and drive that project towards the city, and so there's a lot of pride involved with that. Uh, one other thing is that, um, we've picked up three positions in our engineering department, so with the losses of Jim McClellan, Susan Hockley, Tim Hockley, we're starting to replenish. These guys are, uh, two are interns, and one is a new inspector. I'm very excited about the interns, because it's new blood, new ideas, and the ability to, uh, as Mr. Williams alluded to, to drive our business, to drive the city into new places, and we're very proud to have that, uh, in our city, and thank you very much, and have a great day.
All right, thank you. And I just to, to articulate on the, with the school district, they did a, a program, obviously, and we talked about it before a little bit, but where the kids were able to do art in all levels, and they're going to be able to see their art up on the, on those banners, and especially in Village of the Arts, where most of the banners are dilapidated or gone. So, you know, and again, Village of the Arts, the arts and the kids and all of that, and that kind of used to be taken care of by realize Bradenton at times, and with some changes, the way things happened in the past, you know, that wasn't being done as, as efficiently. And so, um, when the school district came to us, it was like, wow, they're going to buy the banners and we'll get them up, and those things will, you're going to see a lot of people downtown walking and taking a picture of their student with the banners and all of that, and it's about reading and, and art and all of that, and anytime we can help a child get better, you know, and have a, award, that's, that's great, so those are going to go up. And then, uh, Dean had brought up about the LPGA. Obviously, that's going on right now, and it'll start on Thursday, tomorrow officially, so Bradenton's getting a lot of press out of that, and then when it goes on Peacock and I think NBC on the weekend, everything they're going to say is Bradenton, 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 and as Elliot says, if you get one impression from the, the TDC and all of that through the tourist development, uh, if they come here once, seventy-four percent of them are going to come back and, and maybe even buy a home or a visit, so, and that's what we want, more people to, uh, really know how good Bradenton is and, and how we can be positive, so.